Kind of might as well just feel them all, sorry.
Oh, no, this is more. Really?
You might as well just be. It would be three of you twins. I don't mean anything wrong.
We're back on the record. Thank you. I get motion to adjourn from executive session.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn from executive session.
Moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutter.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioners Homan.
Aye.
We were supposed to have a presentation on an update on the Child Advocacy Center by Jennifer Nicely. She sent us an email stating that she would not be able to make it tonight. She's interviewing some kids. Maybe it's good to remind the public of what this group does. Just go right ahead.
For those who may not be familiar with the Child Advocacy Center, the city was asked to contribute. I think a lot of cities and villages were also asked. This is an independent organization that interviews children who have been subject to abuse or neglect. And I think it gives them a neutral setting and cuts down the number of times that they need to be interviewed. In the past, there were times when children were interviewed multiple times and that was seen as not good to them. So we have approved money in the past and if the opportunity presents, I would do it again.
Sounds good. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Approve all of the minutes from the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Regular City Commission Meeting and Resolution R dash thirty-two dash twenty-five, a resolution appointing a member to the Energy Board.
Who was appointed? The public now. You want to say? Oh, sorry.
Greg Blankenship.
He is currently a member and is re-upping.
Continue. I want to do that now.
Oh, we can do that.
Oh, yeah, I totally skipped that. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, motion to approve the business agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the business agenda. I'd also like to comment though, for those that weren't here at the very beginning of the meeting, we did excuse Mr. DeBrosse. Mr. DeBrosse, he is in our nation's capital tonight, representing Pickle. So he was excused earlier.
Also, there is a letter from the Fire Training Committee that I will submit and have put in online so that you can see it. I don't have that with me. But it's an update from the Fire Training Committee. I need a motion to approve the business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now on old business. Second reading, ordinance number O dash two dash twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Chapter fifty of Pickle Code.
Good evening. This is a second reading to update Chapter fifty of the Pickle Code to reflect the new sanitation rates for the remainder of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine as indicated in Exhibit A.
Any comments from Commissioners?
Has there been any changes to this since we saw it last time?
No changes.
Thank you.
Public comment, Kim Heisler.
Hello. Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. I had a question about like the percentages where is talking about our billing is. So. I found out the percentages, the percentages for the utility office distribution for refuse is thirteen percent. And I know it was mentioned that like ten to fourteen thousand per year is going to be used for the seniors to be able to cover for that, to make that less cost. In the paperwork here, it says stabilization of this service within the first thirty days or whatever. But this is all according to or pertaining to the amounts that's actually going to be used for different things. It says this will be necessary to allow for payments to the contracted vendor. Contracted vendor. So what exactly are the payments to the contracted vendor? Is that basically when we pay you guys our bill, then you guys take that and give to them? Is that what that means? That's question number one. The second thing says the adjustment of funds which employees are transitioning into. So the second question is, what kind of funds are we having to pay out of the sanitation because they're transitioning into other areas?
I know we have to pay the utility business office for.
Right, that's the first thing that I was mentioning. But this is employees transitioning. If I'm correct, you guys had mentioned that there's not going to be any change in the utility business office. This is specifically talking about the employees transitioning.
Yeah, so that's just to cover, they're going to go over to different cost GL codes. So they're going to move out of the enterprise fund from sanitation. And it's depending on the time that they move is kind of a moving ball as to where that's at in the pay period. And so there's no number associated with that because we're not certain of that date yet.
Okay, so based on that and earlier, I could have, and I could be wrong, but it was mentioned by I think Catherine that the positions were already unfilled. So they just transitioned over to filled spots.
The positions that were unfilled are going to transition over to public works and parks. The positions that are currently filled in sanitation will go to those enterprise funds.
But aren't you saying that they're vacant?
Some are vacant, some are filled.
Okay. So the vacant spots, then why would that money be coming out of the?
It's not coming, the positions are vacant, we're not paying anybody.
I know, but what you're saying though is that when you do start paying people, it's coming out of the enterprise fund.
It will be on the enterprise fund that they're assigned to. So if it's public works or parks, they will be paid out of those enterprise funds.
Okay.
For those funds.
But here it says specifically the adjustment of funds which employees are transitioning to. So to me, that sounds like you're not taking it from the funds of the division they're going to that it's coming out of. The sanitation funds. Am I not understanding right?
You're not understanding that. The fund, whatever fund, let me rephrase this, whatever activity that they're providing, if it's affiliated to the enterprise fund or the fund that they're actively employed in, that's where they get paid. Once they transition over to a new fund and they begin activities in the new fund, they are paid out of that, be it public works or streets or wherever.
Okay. And then the first question, if you can answer that also. The payments would be contracted to the vendor.
Yeah, the payments are, that's the function of the utility billing office or business office is they collect all of the payments from the residents and then make one, submit one payment to the vendor.
But that's not costing us any extra to do that part, right? That's just, you're just saying that those funds that's coming in from us is going over there.
It's no different than they're collecting and providing customer service now.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Nicholas Smart. Great. Neese. Okay, thank you. All right, this is the second reading. Any other questions from Commissioners? I don't have your card. Jeff's. All right, come on up, Jeff.
Jeff Grimes, fifteen twelve Marjean Drive. I don't have that in front of me, but from what I'm gathering is now, since we're changing over to Rumkey, they have increased the age of residents that are receiving discounts on the sanitation. Is that true?
Is that true? Why would we change if that's the case?
Rumkey's age is sixty.
They were going to take.
Sixty-five and ours is sixty-two.
Then why aren't they going to keep it the way it was? I mean, I thought they were going to, if we transitioned to them, they were going to take what we had. I'm with you.
So that is going to put an additional expense on senior citizens in our community because we've transitioned over to Rumkey. So how can we do that?
We'll ask them to take it back down to sixty-two like it was, like we had it.
Thank you. And so we've got all these funds left over from the sanitation department. But the citizens have already paid to have those excess funds. So if we have these excess funds, it should go back to the citizens that have already paid for their trash. Shouldn't be put into some type of a slush fund because we paid for the trash. So that's how we got the excess. So if we take the two point seven million dollars that is in the trash fund, the citizens of Pickle shouldn't have to pay any for any trash services until the two point seven million dollars is gone.
I don't think we want to expend the entire fund. We want to, let's say something after five years doesn't go well. We want to have a fund in case we want to go back to our own.
So how much are you going to keep back?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe the first five years leaves a million and change in the fund after the first five years.
But we had to do away with the trash because we were in desperation of not having any money. So we're going to keep a million dollars in a slush fund.
An enterprise fund, yep.
So like I said before, if you're only going to keep a million, then there's one point seven million dollars that the citizens of Pickle have already paid for our trash services. So why do we have to pay for our trash services being transitioned over?
All the money in the sanitation enterprise fund legally has to be spent on sanitation services. So some of that's going to padding out the billing office. Otherwise, that billing office expense would just hit your bill and you have to pay more there. So some of this is subsidizing your bill. The other part of it, as we said, was some, a couple thousand dollars is being spent per month on, or per year on senior citizens for the collection to come pick them up. You could bring up a point about it being moved up to sixty-five. But the rest of them would still be subsidized by that. So this is all still being spent on sanitation services. To the extent that it's a slush fund, it's still a slush fund for sanitation. It can't legally be spent on anything else. We've got internal audit and state audit that guarantees that those cannot be spent on things that are not sanitation related.
Kind of like when we paid the electric for ninety-three hundred State Route sixty-six? Is that how it's going to be watched?
Not sure what the analogy there is.
Well, we had a company that was having their utilities paid at ninety-three hundred State Route sixty-six. So I question anything that the city has to, with their financial department. We still haven't found out why that happened. So I'm looking forward to the Fire Commission's report. So and then we're paying our city employees to do the billing for Rumkey. So have you figured out how many hours a week that the city will be paying its employees to do Rumkey's billing?
Whether those employees are here for Rumkey or not, they still have to be here for the water and the wastewater collection as well as the electric. So the employees are going to be here regardless if they're collecting for three enterprise funds or four, it doesn't matter.
It still doesn't make any sense that the citizens are paying for city employees to do Rumkey's job. So I don't care if it's an hour. I don't care if it's twenty hours.
Rumkey's billing solution to handle it in Rumkey House would be substantially more expensive than us handling it in our house. And we wouldn't even save any money if we did that because as Paul said, those employees are crossed over with the other utilities.
Still taking it, still taking time out of.
Jeff, your time's up.
Imagine that.
It's up, well, that's not. It's timers. Hey, I would like to make a motion though to change the age for senior citizens back to sixty-two from sixty-five.
Mayor, that can be done. We don't need a motion. I said, we looked into that, it can be done without a motion.
I would direct the.
All right, let's do that. Yeah?
I've been here in Pickle for like sixteen years now. I turned sixty-five, I didn't know there was a, at sixty-two, you have to ask for the discount.
This program.
You have to ask for it.
It's based on age and income.
Okay, okay. So, but do you have to ask for it?
Correct.
Okay.
This is still just a summary.
Yeah, Mr. Oberdorfer, is there opportunity to negotiate the contract yet with changing that age range?
Yeah, that can be accommodated, yes.
I would direct you to look into that.
All right. I think that's all the public comment. On service, the second reading. Next in old business is ordinance number O dash three dash twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Chapter fifty. An ordinance to adopt revisions of Chapter ninety, animals to permit backyard chickens.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is the second reading of ordinance zero three twenty-five, which would adopt provisions to Chapter ninety, allowing backyard chickens in the city of Pickle. This is the second reading and there are no changes from the previous reading.
I do have one question. So I was back and forth with the mayor on this and kind of debating things as far as house structure. But I did, it wasn't until just a little bit ago I saw how this is set up. So let's see, on section, what is it, ninety point one? Oh, ninety point oh seven. And then subsection B, paragraph one, item B nine. It's on page forty or fifty-three on this. It says, no enclosure may be located closer than ten feet away from any property land. No problem there. And no closer than twenty-five feet from any adjacent residential structure designed for human occupancy. Now on my property, I've got a house that was the original house. Then there's a breezeway because they didn't want to walk out and get snowed on. And it goes out to a two-car garage, which obviously we don't live in. If I want to have my coop right on the other side of that garage, would that be permissible under this? Or is that still going to be qualified under that, does that include part of my residential structure?
Yeah, the occupancy is not, it's not like dependent upon where you would sleep. It would be whether you would occupy the structure. So the intention there would be, you could certainly put it next to a shed. You could put it next to an accessory structure of some sort. But you know, if you, if it is attached to your primary structure or your home, that is likely considered a structure that is occupied under our code. And therefore you would have to be twenty-five feet away. From any adjacent residential structure.
They put a roof over the breezeway in between so that they wouldn't get snowed on walking out the back door and going to grow up. I don't know, maybe I'll invite children for a cup of tea and you could take a look at it sometimes.
Sounds like they're structurally not attached.
Right, they're not, they're structurally not.
Cosmetically passed.
They're cosmetically, but not structurally.
I don't think that is, would be considered an occupied structure though.
Right.
We certainly can look into each one. We're going to, as these come forward, if this is adopted, we're going to have to go through individual cases, case by case, as we see them.
All right. Any other comments from Commissioners?
Yes, I have one. One of the questions that I received in over the phone was what happens when chickens are mistreated? For instance, not fed or somehow mistreated. And my assumption is that that would have to be investigated by the animal protection people. Same as a dog or cat or other kinds of animals. So that's a concern on my part. I was out to Aldi's today to check on eggs. Eggs currently as of today, five ninety-seven, a dozen for a large white shell egg. The other thing I saw on the news, and hope the others saw it, was that Channel Seven ran a special expose on backyard chickens. And the bottom line was that they said if you're expecting to save money on having your own chickens to produce eggs, don't do it. It's not cost efficient. And they estimated the cost for having your own chickens for eggs for your own use, a dollar five per egg. That's over twelve dollars a dozen. So it's interesting.
We might get there according to the latest forecast.
Keep killing chickens?
You know, if people want to do it, I have no objection to it. I have heard from several people here recently that are opposed and I understand that their reasoning is for it. But there's several restricted covenants within the city that won't allow it. So in some of those people's cases, I told them that it wouldn't be allowed in your area. But there are other areas where people want to do it. I'm fine with it. Do you have any comments on?
I don't.
All right, so public comment, we'll start with Greg Neese.
Yeah, I'd like to.
You say you're at, that's great, I'm sorry.
Ten twelve West Green Street. Pickle, Ohio, four five three five six. Well, if we're going to do it, we might as well do it right.
That's right.
We voted on cop cars two weeks ago. Week after we voted on it, I had to walk into a vendor of the city and a vendor of mine too. And there's a K-nine unit. When were these actually bought? Why did you all have to vote on them when they were already purchased?
We're talking about chickens?
Oh, no.
No, that's the one. Will you come back up and bring that, that's a good question. Bring that back up when, when you get a chance. We're talking about chickens.
I agree with it. Myself, I'd like to see chickens myself. You know? I mean, anything to save a buck anymore, it's not getting any cheaper.
It's not. So please bring that question back. We're talking right now about chickens. Nicholas Smart?
Nicholas Smart, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. I know there were certain provisions written into the paperwork ordinance regarding the chickens' waste, the waste and regarding the urea and the feces, I believe. But I don't know if it went beyond that to include deceased chickens. So I'm just wondering how we're going to take care of any deceased chickens that might wind up.
Again, there's no change to the language. It is the same as we discussed for that topic the last meeting, which is you would put them in the trash as you are allowed to do.
Okay. That still brings up concerns because then you have, let's say it's summertime and they're in the trash and then you have oodles of flies and everything flying around, around your trash cans and it could be a problem, an issue for the neighbors. And I just think there should be a way to secure them, like in some type of compostable bag or something to seal them up. But then that brings up another issue. If they're in the landfill, then you have coyotes and foxes trying to get in those bags and then they're choking on bags. So I don't think there's a way to win there. Any suggestions? I mean. I mean, it is. It is. Mr. Rutter, do you have any suggestions because you've been, you know, pretty influential on.
It's the same discussion we have with deceased cats and all kinds of other things. And again, what it presents is a health concern.
Okay. I mean, do you have any ideas about how to?
Yeah. Currently, I think the animals that become deceased in the city are picked up by the sanitation department. And I assume they make their way to the general trash, to the dump.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll just work our way through it and that'll be on growing pains, I guess. And we'll find out how everything plays out in the long run. Maybe we'll have to make amendments as we go. Do I got something on my back or what?
I heard you. Thank you, Nicholas.
You're welcome.
Kim?
Hello, Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. I would still strongly suggest leaving it to the people, passing it and leaving it to the people. I think there's a lot of people not wanting them, thinking that like everybody in the city is going to get them. And that is not going to be the case at all. I'd be surprised if there'd be like twenty people out of the whole city that's going to be able to have them. And it's a very, it's not necessarily either about the price of the eggs. It's about having pets and having that camaraderie with, you know, nature and stuff like that. So I think it's great for kids. It's a whole learning experience on how to take care of animals and stuff. I really don't think there's going to be any willing-nilly people going out and, you know, getting chickens just because it's fun. I mean, it's a huge thing and undertaking and actually it's written in the, it's written in the code or the stuff that you guys are suggesting that they have to take like a class and take some time to kind of see what is actually going on. So again, I think it's something that would be nice to pass and let the people choose. As for Nick's comment about, you know, the deceased animals and stuff like that, it was mentioned before that, you know, we go out to eat all the time. You go to the grocery, you buy raw meat, you throw the beans and the meat out in the trash. It's not that much different at all. And we're not really concerned about that. So that's, you know, I don't, there's not going to be a tremendous amount of chickens that's going to need to get the can. As of the mistreatment of chickens, that's pretty amazing too because there's mistreatment of children. There's mistreatment. There's mistreatment of dogs and cats and everything. So chickens is no different. Again, there's going to be a less amount of chickens than, than people think. And the enforcement is, is kind of a bummer because the enforcement, just like everything else, like code enforcement, sometimes it's subjective and selective, which is a bummer. And, you know, I don't, I don't want my neighbor to say that they don't want me to have a chicken, so I can't have one. So that also needs to be looked at. But I would still, you know, leave it, leave it to the people. I think that the folks that want them, want them for a reason and it's more than just the egg price. I think they're, you know, really wanting it for the whole God thing and becoming closer to nature and.
Self-sufficient.
Be self-sufficient. That's exactly right. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Joe Wilson?
Joe Wilson, 211 West Green. I'm speaking against this. I think the odor is going to be a problem. I think predators will be a problem. My niece in Cincinnati had some chickens. She found out she had some rats burrowing into dirt to get to the chicken or the chicken feed, I guess in this case. So she immediately got rid of them because she has kids there. Home values, I think will go down. I can't imagine it'd go up having one nearby. The, the biggest problem I see is you're kind of underestimating the diseases that are going along with this. There are a lot of them that I think you've all read about. But the, obviously the bird flu is in the news and it's being transferred to cats and to cows and to people currently. But the one that's, that catches my attention the most is one, is a disease that I have that I got from birds. I don't know where or which birds it was, but it's the histoplasmosis and I have it in my left eye. I think I got it as a child. I didn't know at the time I had it. Maybe 20 or 30 years from there, I noticed my eyesight, which is one of the areas that the histo can go to. It can go to your, it can go to your lungs. It can give you flu and it can also go to your eyes. So in my case, it went to my, to my eye. And I started getting fluid that was getting in the back of my eye. It was going through scar tissue that was the result of the histoplasmosis, from what they tell me. And when the doctor told me about this, he asked me if I lived on a farm near chickens because he assumed that that's where I got it from. I did not and I'm not near chickens. But I was, I grew up near Echo Lake, so I'm guessing maybe Echo Lake with all the birds there, possibly could be it, I don't know. But it is a real problem. There's a, there's a histobelt that follows Ohio River because of all the birds that, you know, follow the lake and everything. So it's, it's like a pollen that gets in the air. It, it comes from the bird droppings. It gets in the air like, like pollen would be. You don't know you're breathing it. You can't see it, you can't smell it. So you take it in your body and that's how, how it gets there. I was reading online that the veterinarians say that there are certain groups that should not be touching chickens anywhere there are. And one would be children under five years old, pregnant women, adults 65 and older, and anyone with weak immune system issues. So just be aware that you're, you know, you could very easily be tracking in the, the bird droppings, the chicken droppings into your house if you're not careful. You know, they suggest you wear, you don't wear the clothes that you go in there to clean inside your house. They suggest wearing masks, all these things because of all these issues. So be aware of that. And I'm glad that it's not allowed in my area. But I'm, I'm still worried about kids and other susceptible folks getting issues from that. So that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Dan Dunn? Hi, Dan.
I'm Dan Dunn.
What's your address?
I'm 1002, and I happen to do Pickwa. And I'm not really in favor of that too much. I was kind of worried about some of the things that people's already said. But I was also.
You moved the mic up to your.
Yes. Sorry, I don't talk very well.
You're talking fine, just fine.
I didn't know, you know, like the chicken, you got chicken coops and it's an open yard. What would keep children or cats straight over around there causing mischief? And then maybe creating contamination because I know it can be contaminated to chickens, to cats. And they've even documented this, I think out west. It's even been transmitted to some dairy cows. So far, so I'm kind of concerned about that. And, and then the clucking noises they make all the time. I mean, I'm sure everybody's been around somewhere where somebody had a parking dog and it's just annoying. And the chickens are just out outside all the time. And I'd like to go outside and sit down and not have to put up with that. And in the summertime, I'm worried about the fragrance that you're going to get from the chicken manure. My grandpa had a farm. We had dairy cattle and chickens both. I didn't care for the chickens too much. And we had, we had destroyed a crop twice out there at my grandpa's farm. One time I was in grade school, I don't remember much. And the other times towards high school. And then the second time, when it got into the chickens, just did away with it. So, you know, it is around. So I'm worried about cats going up because cats prowl. And we have a number of feral cats running around that are unmanaged. And I just wonder what problems that could possibly create. And I know I have a lot more questions than I have answers. And the one is, would you want, would you want chickens being raised next to your house where you're living now? I mean, that's, that's one question. I mean, and, and some people may not mind, but other people might object. So go along with that. I'm going to be selling my house here one of these days. And if there was something next door to my house, I wonder how that might affect the future sale of my real estate. I mean, I'd like to get good money from a property if possible, and that might be a detraction. I know one neighbor that I have, I visit. Down the street, there's probably too many dogs. I don't know what the regulations are, but they're big dogs. And, and they do a terrible job of picking up their manure. And he says when the wind blows in the summertime, it stinks pretty bad. And, and of course, a lot of times people are afraid to say much to their neighbors because of frictions and you don't always know how people's going to react these days. Sometimes, you know, people take aggressiveness to, to, to things. So I just don't have a lot of, I'm just not a figure of fact. I figured chickens are, to me, that's agriculture. And where we're living, this is residential. So if you really feel that strongly, then maybe you need to be moving to a more agricultural environment. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Melissa Jakomet?
Just a short. Melissa Jakomet, 221 Gordon Street here in town. As you can tell, I am for chickens for my earrings.
I like them.
Okay. I just want everybody to remember, we're talking about a maximum of six chickens. You know, I think when it comes to the smell, it's very minimal because of that. We're not talking about a farm that has even 20. Again, we had a very wonderful advocate here during the planning commission. I believe her name was Valerie with four H. Very informative, the class that she suggested to sign up for. I've been proactive and I'm already signed up for that class. I'm going to be going, I think, next week. It's just, keep that in mind. You know, I think it's going to be something that's more positive for the ones who want to obtain them, obtain them. So, you know, and I just wish people would worry about breaking laws instead of worrying about chickens so much. But that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Are her chicken earrings also laying eggs? Oh, my gosh. I love it.
Commissioners, any other comments on this? Nope. This will serve as a second reading. I did forget to mention that the board that controls our video is still out for repairs. This is not being livestreamed at this time. It will be on tomorrow.
It'll be uploaded tomorrow.
It'll be uploaded tomorrow and you'll be able to see it or you can watch it tonight.
It's not being livestreamed by us.
By us, that's us. Can I finish? I thought I was about to say.
Sorry.
She didn't have a public comment card.
I, I don't have, you have to fill out the.
Yes.
This is my first time yet.
I'm sorry. That, I think that's great. But you go fill out a card and we'll let you, we'll let you out.
Okay.
All right. No.
I, I filled out a sheet to make comments, but.
That's for the public comments.
For public comment.
Okay.
Right now, we're looking at.
We're doing, we're doing.
Thank you.
This is agenda items.
Sorry.
As I was saying, our livestream's not working, but there are two guys back there that are livestreaming on Facebook. That will go to YouTube, am I correct? That's the Facebook. So they could catch us live if you look for them. Adam Sees and Rhett.
Rhett's channel is RF Media Group.
Mm-hmm. RF Media Group. Thanks. All right, Sharon Brandt?
Hi, my name's Sharon Brandt. I live at 424 North Parkway Drive. I've lived in Park Ridge for probably going on now 20 some years or longer. When we first moved there, there were rules made by the builders of that area. Is that still in place?
Yeah, if there is, if it's a restricted covenant, then you can't have chickens there. So there, there were, how many, 20, did we say? 20 in the city, 20 different places where.
So you have a record of those?
Yeah, they live.
I, I have a copy, but I don't know where it's at.
The unfortunate part is the city cannot enforce that. The, what has to happen is the homeowners association or whatever will need to enforce that.
I don't know if there is a homeowners association in Park Ridge right now. But if it's something that was put into writing, is it not some form of a legal?
Only if it, it makes its way to the court. We've discovered several of the, the, what are called HOA agreements that have not made their way to the court. Some, some have exhausted. So the question, originally we had 20. And again, the bottom line is the city does not feel that we have the power to enforce HOAs. That would be up to the residents.
It's a jurisdictional issue. For instance, Pickwa police can't go arrest somebody in Troy and we can't enforce the, we don't have the jurisdiction to enforce those covenants. Though you would have the right to take them to a court for some kind of litigation.
Is, is there going to be a license or some sort of?
They'll have to register, yeah.
Protection about the animals?
There's a little ordinance online and you can look up what the proposed ordinance is and all the rules are listed in that ordinance as to what you can and can't do.
I understand there's two sides to this. I also understand I don't want to live next door to someone that has chickens. I've lived next, I've had neighbors that didn't take care of their own dogs or cats. And with an issue like this, if someone's in a hurry, doesn't have a lot of time and they decide they want to have chickens to save money on eggs.
Do you know how much work it's going to take for them to do the chickens? It's a lot. If you read through the ordinance like I asked, you'll see all the stuff that they have to do before they can even get to the chickens. And then maintaining the chickens is a lot of work in and of itself. And if they don't maintain that, then they're not going to be able to keep the chickens.
I understand that, but unfortunately, we're not in a perfect world and people don't follow the rules. That happens quite a bit. We, we see a lot of things with issues in our town concerning the way residents look with furniture on the front door or chiars not taken care of. To me, this is like the last thing Pickwa needs. We need to bring our area up and our economy up so that we can grow again. When I grew up in Pickwa, we had a great industry, industrial area. Everyone worked. It was a happy place. We had all kinds of stores and things. I don't want to keep shrinking. I want to grow. And I'd like to see Pickwa do that for my family and hope that they would want to stay here and not move away because it doesn't offer as much. It's almost like every day you see where stores are closing and we're losing that. I just don't want anything else to cause any more issues for us. It's been a long, hard haul. And a lot of us have stayed here out of loyalty and our love for Pickwa and our family and friends. But I think there comes a time, I mean, are we going to start? If the price of beef goes up, are you going to go buy a cow and put it in your backyard? I mean, this, to me, this is kind of.
Oh, well, I might rent a freezer, a third freezer and put more beef in it.
That's right. I would agree with that. But I, I don't think that just because the price of eggs have gone up, the price of cars are going to go up, we're going to have so many more things with the new tariffs added. It just doesn't make sense to me.
So this issue was brought up in 2022 or 2023. So it's not just because the price of eggs have gone up. It's because people express the desire to want to do this. And only the people that, like, like Melissa said, there's only going to be so many people. I think Kim said it as well. I'd be surprised if there was more than 20 people that want to do that.
But do you want to be that person living next door to them?
Sure. Why not?
Well, that's because you're.
And if they're not doing it right, I call and they get in trouble.
But, you know, it's also the other person's right. And will that always happen? I mean, will, will people actually be held?
That's what, if you read the ordinance, you see, you can see, yes.
Well, you know, there's different things. We have dogs running around in our neighborhood. And what Joe Wilson said was absolutely true. The, the types of diseases, the types of issues, besides the mice and they draw snakes. They also draw coyotes. I mean, we have all of that in, in our area and.
Oh, your time is up. I'm sorry. You get five minutes.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Yes.
So one of the issues that you brought up was that we want for our economy, our local economy to grow. So when, I, I plan to be one of those folks that gets chickens if we pass this. I've already taken the class online. I also have two different friends who have chickens who have volunteered to teach me one-on-one, hands-on, how to do it right. When I go buy an enclosure to put my coop in, I'm going to go to that place that's down the road. When I get the coop itself, I'm going to go to that place that's down the road, down by Planet Fitness. And when I go get my chicks or my feed or anything else for my chickens, I'm going to shop locally, which is going to help boost our economy. Now, I'm not going to be able to turn it all around all on my own. But what if everybody else that does this, does that, it's going to improve the economy even just a little bit? Whereas if it doesn't pass, we're not going to be doing that. So we won't be growing the economy in that way.
Any other ques- questions? Oh, Pam Holden. Next time, put your last name on there, please. It just said Pam, that's all right.
I didn't know I forgot that.
You know, I know you do.
307 Cleveland Street and I am for the chickens. And as far as the wildlife in the city, I was driving right down Green Street. This man here and possum's crossing the road at night. I mean, you've got wildlife, you know, I got a groundhog that likes to live in my yard since my dog died and the dog kept, the German shepherd. And the dog kept, the German shepherd kept them out of my yard. I mean, you can't even keep groundhogs out of the city. I mean, and let alone the raccoons and skunks and everything else. I really don't think chickens are going to attract any more wildlife. We have plenty already in the city. And then as far as spreading diseases, it's normally the factory farms that spread the diseases inside themselves. If we're so worried about the wild bird spreading diseases, I don't see any dying in the backyard and trust me, they live in my trees. I have lots of trees in my yard. I just think we just should be more sustainable. Besides the fact that it's better for the environment, you know where your food's coming from. And it's not just the cost alone. And as it was brought up two years ago, like you said, only twenty percent of the city can have them. And yes, I have asked my neighbors, they all want me to get chickens. Two of my neighbors want to get them too. But, you know, I don't know, in my neighborhood, they all want chickens. And the way you've got the rules set up, it's not going to be a problem. I know people are worried about the smell, but the thing is, is if you've got a, a clean coop, the smell is not bad. It's not. And you smell manure in the city from the fields all around it more than you ever smell anything else. More than you smell the dog poop down the street. And as far as cats and chickens, they don't get along. I've had chickens for three years out of the country. They stay away from each other. So it's not going to do anything for the feral population. The only thing that's going to kill the feral cats, to be honest with you, is the coyotes. That's it. And I've seen that out of the country too. They will treat them, they will kill them. That's it. And that's if they get caught outside, let's put it that way. I don't know what else to say, except I hope you do pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second reading at this point. And we will move on. Next is new business. Ordinance O dash four dash twenty-five.
An ordinance authorizing the establishment of the law enforcement custodial fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This ordinance would create a fund for accounting for certain revenue collected by the police department. So under the higher vice code, our police department is provided authority to seize cash in certain types of investigations and certain types of crimes. So when this occurs, the city is required to hold that money until the, a case is adjudicated by the courts. Then at that time, the court decides what to do with that money. Some of that may be paid out to other agencies, support costs and so forth. Some of that may come back to the city. But until that court order is issued, we can't spend any of that money. We just have to hold it and can't do anything with it. So currently, we hold that money. When we get it, it's posted into our safety fund, which is a special revenue fund or, well, the operating fund of the police department. And it's posted to a, a cash account code within that fund and also to a liability. So we hold that money in there until the court adjudicates the case and we get the distribution order. Then that money is transferred to the law enforcement trust fund, which is a special revenue fund. That money can be spent on certain expenditures allowed by law. So this type of activity where we're holding money, someone else's money, in this case, because at the time we hold it, we don't know if it's going to be ours or not. That's to be decided by the court. So it's out of our control. So when we have that type of activity, this is known as custodial activity. So this fund would, or this ordinance would create a custodial fund to place this money in all by itself rather than post it into a liability account within the police operating fund. This is more in line with the guidance provided by the Government Accounting Standards Board, Statement eighty-four on custodial activity. Also provide more straightforward accounting and that money will be there all by itself. We, you know, put tighter internal controls over that money. So then, now, once we get the, once the court order is issued and we allow to, if, if the city is entitled to any of that money, it is then moved to the law enforcement trust fund where it can be spent. So this custodial fund would provide a better, more appropriate method of accounting for this money while we're holding it.
Is the, is the source of?
Pass a question.
Yeah. Is the source of this money, is this kind of what's more commonly known as civil asset forfeiture?
Yes.
Okay. And you had, you had mentioned that this has to kind of sit in what we'll call an escrow account, waiting for the court to decide who, where that money ends up going. And so that would mean that that, the, the cops can't just pull somebody over and pull a hundred bucks out of your wallet and keep it for themselves. They have to go to a judge to decide that, correct?
That's correct.
So that's kind of the, the check and balance is the, the judicial branch. The, the court system will double check that that money should be forfeited. And then if it shouldn't be forfeited, then the court will decide that it goes back to the individual, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as I read in the, in the guidance from staff, if, if their, the money is awarded to the city, the commission would then have the opportunity to decide ultimately how that source of funds is, is decided.
Yes, and there are, the expenditures allowed are written into the higher vice code. Also, the police department is required to have a policy, which they do, along those same lines, you know, specifying specifically what types of expenditures this money can be used for.
So we're not just going to take the money, put it in the general fund?
No.
It should be.
Okay, my thoughts with that?
Yeah.
No, it's very strict, the laws are very strict about what that can be used for.
Okay. Any other comments from Commissioners? Jeff Brown's?
Jeff Brown's fifteen twelve Margene Drive. So I'm just trying to figure out, we've got it in safekeeping now with the city. And what is going to make any difference if we move it into this new proposed ordinance compared to what we have now?
It's better accounting, that's what he was talking about. This is a, a, a better way of keeping account of it so that it doesn't accidentally get lost and then slush it into the general fund.
Yes.
So we're not keeping track of it now?
No, we are keeping track of it. This makes it a better way of keeping track of it. You can always improve.
And, and how is it better?
Because the money is all by itself in the fund. So as I explained, the, right now, when we get the money, it is posted to a separate cash account code within the police operating fund, the safety fund. Then also it's posted to a liability account. So it's there and it's showing that's in those two accounts. However, if, if by some chance that there was, and we do record this, we have a list of all the cases, you know, and so forth, and where the money comes from so that we can account for when we get the order from the court. However, moving it to its own separate fund, it's all there, all by itself, it can be, you know, I guess, watched more closely. I mean, it's, it's provides tighter internal controls over that money so that something doesn't get accidentally miscoded. If it got accidentally miscoded to, say, the cash account, the regular cash account within the safety fund, then perhaps it could get spent on the wrong thing. This provides better internal control.
Let's say you're going out on the weekend and you have to go to the grocery store and get gas and you got fifty bucks for groceries, fifty bucks for gas. And you can put that money all in one pocket and hope that you have remembered in your head the right way. But it's a little bit easier to keep track of it if you put fifty bucks in one pocket, fifty bucks in the other pocket. That way, you're keeping a better check on where that money is at and accidents can't happen as easily.
True.
Also, from an accounting standpoint, you know, as I said, this, this type of activity should be accounted for in a custodial fund, you know, according to the accounting standards. So this satisfies that requirement as well. It's just better accounting.
It just makes it more transparent.
So you've got a, you. You have money from somebody dealing drugs and it goes into an account right now and it says Bob's Drug Case. So if we update it, it's just going to go into another account that says Bob's Drug Case. So how can there be any, if, if we're doing what we're supposed to do now and we just upgraded all of our computer systems and stuff, how can it be any better than Bob's Drug Case here or Bob's Drug Case there? You're still keeping track of it. I, I don't understand, it just sounds like there's more work involved.
No, it's actually less work because it's restricted to one single account every time.
Right.
As opposed to being in one big account.
Well, that, that's kind of the point, though, for, for government transparency and being auditable, is that we do go through a whole lot of extra work for the accounting to make sure that everything's being spent the right way and that it's transparent to the citizen. It'd be, the most efficient way to do it would be as we just dumped it all in one account and just spin on it as we need it. But this is one of those many mechanisms that's a better accounting practice because it helps us keep better track of it, keeps another extra firewall on it so that accidents can't happen as easily, which ultimately leads to, again, better transparency and better tracking for the money that citizens are ultimately responsible for.
Have, have we had any issues with the old accounting?
No, we've, we, I think we just had a really great audit last year, didn't we?
Yes, yes, we did.
So if we had a great, if we had a great audit, then why does it have to be changed?
I mean, are you suggesting that we don't improve processes? Even if they are working well, we shouldn't ever run processes? I'm not, I'm not sure what your point is.
My point is, is we've got this computer system, it goes into the computer system. Then it shouldn't be too difficult to figure out Bob's Drug Case if it's already in the system. So my question is, is why is it necessary now if it's, if it's still the same thing?
Because again, like I said, it adds an extra layer of making it harder to make a mistake.
But you said there was no mistakes made.
Yeah, just because there's been no mistakes doesn't mean there couldn't possibly be mistakes in the future. Did you crash your car on the way here?
That has nothing to do with.
Will you ever crash your car again in the future?
What's that got to do with it?
It means that you didn't make a mistake in the most recent period that we're tracking, which we didn't make a mistake in the most recent audit. But it doesn't mean that we couldn't possibly make a mistake off in the future.
So there's been no mistakes, but now we're going to change it in case there's mistakes.
I, I, I'm not sure how I could better explain that.
We can't explain it any better. I think your time is up, Jeff. They started, Rick, do you have a comment on this?
I think the best way I can explain it is we get state forfeitures and then we get federal forfeitures that you'll see in the next ordinance. And currently, they're going into the same pool, our same account, the same pool of money, but they're earmarking it for which, whether it was a state or a federal forfeiture. And, I mean, it makes it more difficult to track once it's in there. So by separating it out, it would present, because some of the state money can be spent for things that the federal money cannot be. And we do have to report each, the state and the federal government each year, any money that we receive and expenditures. And so by separating this out, it just, it simply makes it easier to track how much money we had from each agency or which forfeiture. And, and it will also help with, for us in terms of knowing how much we have in each one of those accounts to use. So, and to his question about have there been mistakes before, the answer is no. Because we haven't spent, we've spent very little of that money because of the challenges of saying, okay, if I want to spend this much money, do we even have that much money in a state account? So then maybe we should just use the federal to prevent going over on that. So it's just, again, efficiencies here and, and a more professional tracking of the process rather than just doing the earmark. We put it into an entirely separate account to document that for the state and the federal government.
That makes sense. Great, neat. Nicholas Smart? Ken?
Myslar eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. Just hope the software is way better than the software we got for City Plus. Because I know we can't predict what happens and stuff, but it's been months now and it's still not fixed. And to me, that's unacceptable. So hopefully, the software that we're going to is going to be beneficial instead of not.
I, I believe the mayor has explained multiple times, it's the actual hardware board that's broken for the stream, it's not the software.
It's, it's a problem still.
It's, it's not, it's a different problem.
It's a different problem, but it should be fixed by now.
It's hardware versus software. Any other? That's it for public comment. Any other comments from Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion, well, now it's an ordinance. First reading. All right. On to ordinance number O dash five dash twenty-five.
An ordinance authorizing the establishment of the federal law enforcement seizure special revenue fund. This is a first reading.
Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance is intended to create a fund as Chief Byron was speaking about. We also receive federal money through their forfeiture, forfeiture program when our department does joint investigation with federal agencies. So this would account for that money separately as required by the federal requirement.
Okay. Any comments from Commissioners? Ken, did you want to make another comment?
Myslar eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. Just, just to clarify, so this one is for the federal funds and the other is for?
State.
State? Same, same exact thing?
Mm-hmm.
That's it. All right, thanks.
Nicholas? Eric? Jeff? All right. Any other comments from Commissioners? This will serve as a first reading as well. Next on our agenda, City Manager, you have anything?
Good evening, Commissioner. Yeah, just one thing briefly. We've embarked on the parking survey that's been posted on social media, Facebook, LinkedIn, in the city web, webpage as well. We've had over two hundred people participate in it so far, so I'm just encouraging people to go ahead and, and take the survey for us so that we can better understand the needs for downtown parking.
Next on our agenda is Commissioners' comments. Let's start with Commissioner Simmons.
Hey, everybody, happy.
Oh, wait, happy birthday to Commissioner Simmons. Today is his birthday, it's Fat Tuesday.
I forgot. I forgot it was my birthday.
No, you didn't.
Happy Mardi Gras, everybody, because today is Mardi Gras as well. A big shout out to the wonderful folks down in Dobbo's Delights. I went and got a couple of king cakes earlier.
Yes, you did.
Today, and we got some left down there, so I brought up some plates and forks and steps. Help yourself, that's all we got.
All right. Commissioner Vedder?
I will pass tonight.
How did Shiver go through? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm shocked. Commissioner Holden?
I will also pass tonight.
It's killing me. All right. The mayor's report, last week, we did not have a mayor's meeting. I had training and I've got some more training coming up. Still part-time police officers, so they send me, because old ops can learn new tricks. They send me to training, so I went to training last week. But we still do have the mayor's meetings from four to six on Wednesday. We'll have it tomorrow if anybody's interested, like additional information on topics that involve the city. Laven Catholic is out of the basketball tournament. They lost the first game in the first round. They played Fort Larnie. It was kind of sad, but my last child's basketball career is done, he's on to track, so we'll welcome that. Pickwa Show Choir has done a fantastic job this, this year, that just over the weekend, they, they got grand champion. That was the second time this year. So they, they far exceeded any, any rating that they've had before. I watch them and their results because those kids are very talented and they do a good job. And they honor our city and make us look good and we appreciate what they do. And with that said, I'm going to adjourn for. And with that said, I'm going to adjourn for non-agenda public comment. I have to teach at Edison State, so I will not be here. And Commissioner Vetter will be in charge of the non-agenda public comment. I need a motion to adjourn from.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right, so now these are just on chickens and neighbors, so you don't have to call those, but all the beings that want to speak during public comment. And passes down to, you did not vote for them.
She had a thing on there asking.
So you didn't want to take a break, you're going to go right after.
They want to go, so.
Here we go. With the public comment, the first person up is Larry Hamilton.
Larry Hamilton, eleven oh four Maplewood Drive. Good evening, commissioners and city officials. Some time ago, I got something that disturbed me and I want to share with the city. It's a Wikipedia page and it states editing Randolph Reed people. And under legacy, it states, "In 2017, the city of Pickwa converted a drive-through into an information center about the Randolph Reed people. The dedication ceremony and opening took place on sixteen July of the same year. During the ceremony, a minister washed the feet of Kazzy Hines, who was mayor at the time, as a symbol of unity. In 2018, Pickwa Public Library displayed Freed Will, the Randolph Reed people from slavery to settling, a traveling display by the National Afro-American Museum and Cultural Center in conjunction with Ohio History Connection." Now, the first sentence was where I wanted to have some level of clarity or some degree of determining whether or not there was anything to that statement. And I'm going to read it again. "In 2017, the city of Pickwa," and I'm going to reemphasize, "the city of Pickwa converted a drive-through into an information center about the Randolph Reed people." Now, there is a citation associated with this particular reference, but I wonder and if there could be any conjunction with the city of Pickwa in connection with that I don't understand how a journalist might be able to write something like that when I had been responsible for notifying the city of Pickwa and the Johnston Farm in association with the Randolph narrative, that I was purchasing 655 North Main Street. And it would serve as a interpretive center for the Underground Railroad and especially in regards to promoting the Randolph narrative. So I decided to determine if there is any information that I might be able to secure by way of a FOIA. And in December, I sent a FOIA request to the Public Information Officer. And I stated, "I would like to make a public records request relating to any email, fax, or any other form of correspondence relating to Lawrence C. Hamilton, Jr. or Larry Hamilton. I would also make requests for any email, fax, or other form of correspondence relating to 655 North Main Street in Pickwa, Ohio from 2015 to the present. Thank you." I did receive a reply noting that they had received the request, but a considerable amount of time went by and that initial request was filed on Friday, December thirteenth. And on Thursday, January ninth, I wrote again to the Public Information Officer and stated, "It's been nearly a month since I made the FOIA request and I had the expectation that I would have received it before now. I know that you have been on vacation, but I was hopeful that there might have been another municipal employee who would have been assigned this responsibility in your absence. Was my expectation out of the norm of being fulfilled? Please share with me a timeline of performance in this role of meeting and individual FOIA requests." So at the last city commission meeting, I saw the Public Information Officer sitting with the chief of police. And I went over and inquired as to whether or not there might be some explanation that she could provide for me that I would have greater clarity or understanding about my FOIA request.
Your time is about up. Could you summarize quickly?
Okay. So I just want to know what the procedure is and how the process flows by way of the expectation of citizens who are making a FOIA request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Charles Pelter.
Charles Pelter, eighteen oh five Amherst, Candlewood subdivision in Pickwa. And I think I should have, I filled out your request wrong as I did want to talk about the chickens, but anyway.
Still works, go ahead.
Still works, go ahead. Okay. Couple of questions here for the commissioners, something to think about. And I debated this in my mind for a long time. I'm also the vice president of the Pickwa Neighborhood Improvement Corporation. We've talked about that at our neighborhood meetings. First question or thought, why is there any need to raise farm animals within the city limits of Pickwa, Ohio? I've lived here all my life and as she has well spoken before, want to see the economy improve and all that, and I don't think this is one of the ways to do it. Anyway, that's my thoughts. Also, I'm thinking this situation possibly is going to create more problems than it is really worth. We talked about the noise and people have said there's not minimal noise and a smell. And I'm thinking about ninety-degree weather in July here in Pickwa and my neighbor who is very insistent on raising chickens scares me a little bit because I don't know how that's going to, going to fly. Also, I live on the edge of the Yum Farm, which is out our way, and my backyard abates the cornfield, the cornfields. Three times in the last two years, we've sighted coyotes in that field. And I'm thinking, you know, if there are more new animals coming in to that area, it's going to draw them in. And coyotes frankly scare the crap out of me. So that's that, maybe foxes and other animals that might want to come in and prey on these chickens. Now, I understand about 4H and kids raising animals and all that, which is great and 4H is a wonderful thing. I just feel, you know, like they do with other animals. There are kids in town that, that raise animals that live on a farm. They go to a farmer and they're going to raise a cow or a calf or whatever it may be. And I just feel that farm animals belong on the farm. And then finally, Commissioner Simmons, you're my ward commissioner and I have a comment for you. You had mentioned there's probably only going to be twenty or twenty-five or so people that would be actually probably raising the chickens. Those twenty or twenty-five people buying chicken feed and other things at the store are not really going to help the economy of Pickwa that much. We need hundreds of people supporting different businesses in Pickwa to really boost the economy here and new jobs and as, as she's mentioned previously, other things to help boost the economy. I don't think that that's going to make a significant impact. So, and that's all my comments. I thank you and, and as Joe Wilson had, had mentioned, I see his comments, you and Joe and I are together on the neighborhood group and he's brought up some significant things that I think need to be looked at. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you take a moment to respond? Charles, I'm sorry. You were direct, I see you were direct. Yeah.
Lay it on me.
You guys, and you did, and also she mentioned earlier that this is agricultural as opposed to residential, right?
Well, chickens are farm animals, so that's, yeah.
So it'd be agricultural. Okay. So I have a two-tack slot. I have a large piece of property. I have the largest yard.
Yeah, I know where you live.
Right. So if I wanted to have a really big garden, that's enough for vegetables for me and say two of my neighbors, would that be okay?
A garden?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with a garden. You're not breaking any city ordinances or, you know.
So what if?
Too close to your neighbor's property or anything like that?
But see now, if I, if I have a garden and I want organic, if I want, if I value organic gardening, I'm going to want to put organic fertilizer on there. Now that organic fertilizer smells, is that still okay? Well, I don't think necessarily. Organic fertilizer needs to have the heat taken out of it first. But what I'm saying is, you know, that you can actually use, I've got friends up in Canada that still use dead fish. I mean, they go plant holes for fish in, put plant in and off you go. But what I'm getting at is there's no easy crossover between saying this is agricultural or this is residential. At this point, let's, let's end the conversation.
Okay, that's fine.
Add sort of a good other reading on the, on the ordinance. We got the next city commission meeting. Kim Heisler, you want to comment?
Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. First of all, I'm really disappointed that we have no city officials here. It's unacceptable. And I can't believe that you guys won't advocate for us, the people, to have them stay to listen to what our concerns are. The concerns that happen after they leave are the concerns, the very concerns you guys should be talking to them about and making sure they're here to listen about it or finding out here to support us. But it's, it's unacceptable. I mean, I don't, I don't understand how, it's just, it's, it's mind-boggling to me. The second thing that's very mind-boggling to me is that not a one of you guys, Chris Lee, Frank's not here, nobody has mentioned the letter that was mentioned last week and the laws that were broken by the very officials that's taking care of our own city, our, our town. You guys have all taken oaths. I mean, do you guys have anything to say about that at all? I mean, that, it, it, you guys are our voice. And for not a word, a peep to come out of you guys to even mention that it even happened is also unacceptable. You guys are there speaking for us. I think I would be questioned. After I get done, you guys can please answer and respond to that because I want to know if there was any action taken because of that. Regarding the chickens, and again, I really wish people would be more concerned about officials breaking laws than chickens. I mean, that also boggles my mind. As of the, the chicken stink, people get their yard sprayed to get rid of weeds. Farmers put stuff down to get rid of their weeds. It's, it's stinky, stinky, terribly stinky. I, I can't imagine six chickens, you know, the wind blows every day. I can't imagine six chickens going to be so bad that it's going to stink. I, I, I just, I don't get it. Yeah, if you got like, you know, a barn full, I can see that being an issue. Wild animals, same thing. You know, they're, they're there anyway. YouTube, it would be fantastic if you guys would actually put something together and ask our city officials if we could get it back on YouTube and have the city responsible for putting it on YouTube so it's consistent. These guys are using their own time, effort, money to do it. It's not, it's not acceptable. The city, this is all part of what the city should be providing. I don't care that there's hardware, software problems. It just needs to get fixed. And in the meantime, something should be taking place on, on the city's, on our, on our dime, which is, is anyway. Ask for the gentleman that was talking, the information requests, just so that you know, from, from my experience, it's totally up in the air. You could get a request back in a day. You can get it back in a week, in a month, six months, maybe a year, and maybe not at Yes. Why is that? That's something else I'd like to ask you guys directly. Why is that? And can we get some, some answers to that? Maybe, oh, here's another thing. Whatever happened to the question and answer section that used to be in here? It mysteriously went away. Do you guys know what happened to it? Isn't that curious? Could you ask? Can you ask for us why it went away? Because there's lots of questions asked, but there's no answers coming back. So if you can answer like all those questions I had, that would, that would be great. In particular, if there was anything done about the letter that was sent. Because I know you always all got them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I reply back to that letter. I did?
You can check in.
Nicholas Mark, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. First of all, I want to start off thanking all of you for your service and dedication to the community. These past few years have been, have proven to be quite difficult for everybody. Wish to touch upon the, the healing of a fractured community as we continue to move forward in our progress from here on out. And to do so, we must acknowledge some of our faults and shortcomings that have occurred along the way throughout these past several years. If we do not recognize and acknowledge our mistakes, we are doomed to repeat them. I want you to understand that although some of what I say may seem a bit off-putting, I am only coming from a place of love for our community so that we can all benefit through perspective and growth going forward. The commission asked the community to address if and why they think the city manager, Mr. Orbinderfer, Luther Paul Orbinderfer, should be removed from his seat at the end of the last commission meeting. I'm going to touch upon some talking points regarding this issue. I do honestly believe that our community would not be in the current unhealthy and fractured state if not for the actions oversight and lack of, had it been not for Mr. Orbinderfer involving our city in certain endeavors and continuing to lead us in undesirable decisions. As you can see, he's quite the patriot tonight, being not here with us. These... These decisions that are proving to favor public discourse and lack of trust and instability among the citizens. Mr. Orbinderfer had multiple opportunities to get out in front of the battery burn tragedy and issue an apology for what occurred under his signature on the contracts between himself and the entities that operated at 9800 North State Route 66. Yet he did not, he, he did not issue a formal apology through multiple, multiple media formats. I do not believe the community would be in the fractured state of disability and distrust had he gotten out in front of this and just issued a formal apologies and statements. Instead, we watched a man present his worst traits while in chambers and project his unprofessional behavior towards the citizens of the community, challenging their rights to speak at the podium, berating them and asking them if they pay taxes. His worst personality traits were on display for all to see as he remained unapologetic, self-centered, arrogant, conceited, self-serving, egocentric, prideful, simply unable to accept responsibility for his actions and divert, and he diverted responsibility onto others so as not to bruise his ego. Given these behaviors, an apology issued now would simply be considered disingenuous and too little, too late, full of crocodile tears. I believe that our commission and government has been compromised. I say this because it is on display before my eyes when I attend these meetings. I have watched the commission, the commissioners who put their hearts in dedication to their community lose direction. I have watched a two-term mayor, police officer, someone who is deeply rooted in the community and wears his heart on his sleeve and speaking from his heart with true intentions, telling his community that he appreciates people's passion and values their voice, going on to say that the commissioners would not have a voice if the citizens did not have one. Mayor has expressed that the thing he wanted most when he started out on the commission board was for people to speak out. And he wants the citizens at commission asking questions because they are bringing about awareness. And a lot of people have positive things to say and some have negative things to say. But as long as you have a say, that's what makes America, America. So he appreciates the citizens. Unfortunately, these sentiments are not on display. As we have waned over time during our last commission meeting, he told Kim Heisler that we don't have to have public comment, which is a sentiment that has been expressed at other times as well. So mayor's prior sentiments, which I believe he truly holds true to his heart, do not align with taking any public comment, which suggests that he has been influenced and departed from his true intentions and beliefs. So the mayor is driving force of the commission. So what happens when someone is, is driving under the influence and they're caught with empty containers? Ideally, we get them help, embrace them and get them back on track and throw out the empty containers. The toxic traits that exist within Mr. Orbinderfer continue to pollute the system. The negative traits are leaving us with an empty vessel, a container that must be tossed out. Our leaders have a duty to the welfare of the community to not engage in activities, projects, or pass resolutions that may cause or lead to civic discourse, especially when presented that engaging in passing such activities has been shown in advance will do so, such as this substation.
Your time is up.
I know, I know. My time's up. I'll just let somebody read the rest of it for you. So we'll go on from there.
Thank you.
Jeff Grimes, 1512 Margine Drive. I want to thank RF Media Group for coming and doing the city's job. Maybe you should consider hiring them and getting rid of the other stuff that doesn't work. Once again, the city, it's unacceptable for our city to leave and not listen to the citizens that they work for. You guys should be enraged that they are not here to listen to us. You're our voice. You don't care. We didn't get an answer of how many attorneys are working for the city of Pickwa. I would like that answered. I would like this answered. What is the date of the commission meeting that Paul Orbinderfer took his oath of office? Did he sign an oath of office prior to February 4th of 2025? Did the commissioners take an oath of office? Possibly, possibly everything that he's done is illegal. He, I want to know when he took his oath of office. The land on 9801 State Route 66, please consider that this never gets developed only for our water plant. We have bald eagles, we have endangered species. This is our source water protection area. It actually, 9300 State Route 66 may be zoned wrong. There should be no burning out there. This is really close to that area again. Source water protection. I don't understand why anything would ever have to be built out there. It's only houses, the Johnson Farm. If you guys have a couple of lots zoned off, then it wouldn't be the restrictions that you're putting on the city of Pickwa. I insist that nothing ever gets built out there, ever. So then we bought the, the citizens bought the Town and Country building. I think it was $450,000. Was this ever brought up and decided by the commissioners? Or does the city manager just get to decide what he gets to buy? How come if you were spending $450,000 on a building, this didn't get in front of the commission?
The commission had input.
Huh?
The commission had input.
And did, was it ever, it brought in front of the people? It was. It was brought up that we're going to buy the Town and Country and we went through three readings of that?
I'm not sure it had three readings.
It wouldn't have been an ordinance.
Could, it could have been a resolution.
And you guys, you guys were okay with buying a Town and Country building for $450,000? Now in your little packet, we're going to pave it. That's going to be $360,000. So we've got a million dollars in this building. Did anybody get any estimates on what it's going to cost to turn this into a hotel? We're a million dollars in the hole already. So roofing, plumbing, asbestos? And so was there any estimates on turning this into a hotel?
There was multiple hours of executive session that dealt with this. The reason why it had to be an executive session is it has to do with economic development and not leaking market information out to the public before it's, it's ready to go. But I can assure you that those questions that you have, that was presented to the entire commission, all five of us, multiple times over the past year.
So how much money we're going to have in redoing it?
We're not going to be redoing it.
Huh?
I'm not going to be doing it.
You're not going to make a hotel out of it now?
The city of Pickwa will not be making a hotel out of it.
Who's going to be making a hotel out of it? You're going to, you're going to sell this, but we're going to have $450,000 in it and $360,000 in a parking lot. So somebody's going to come in and give you almost a million dollars for that building? And it's not even developed? I can't wait to see that. Ooh, wow. And so we have a Pickwa government page that all of a sudden, you guys want us to give these surveys, but the, a comment section where you're allowed to comment on the Pickwa government cage has disappeared. Wonder if we could put that comment section back on, possible? And you didn't know anything about the elder residents not receiving the discounts? So that means that we haven't looked at this too much. And man, I could just go on and on and on. I would like, I would like answers to all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Brittany Brown, 9937 Harden Alternate. I do have a couple of questions. So if I am remembering correctly, at the last commissioner meeting, we discussed the five acres, the parcel out by the water plant. And we were told that it would be at the next commissioner meeting because it was amended. So does anybody know when that's coming back up?
So it actually wasn't amended, it was just removed. It is currently being rewritten by the city staff. It wasn't ready to be put on this agenda.
Okay.
We think it may be ready to be put onto the next agenda. But because it didn't, it didn't actually go through the amendment process, it's more or less going to end up being the same thing as if it was amended. But technically, it was just removed and disappeared. And we're bringing back a fresh, brand new one that the city's currently writing. It just wasn't ready for today.
Okay, but it will be at the next, the commissioner meeting, not the planning board?
Correct.
Okay, so then that leads me to my next question. I received a letter for the planning board meeting for the 11th next week. And it states that it's voting on zoning it civic. And the parcel number is the same as the parcel number for the five acres?
And Mr. Vetter, we talked about that beforehand, that we thought that might have been an adjacent property or was it different?
Yeah, I saw, I saw the sites for the planning commission. My understanding is that the planning commission, the discussion was only about the five acre plot.
Correct.
The water plant section, the, what, 42 acres or something?
I think it's like 47 or something like that.
Still needs to have a zoning designation.
Correct. So how are they going to be zoned? So state, if we're not already knowing that the five acre plot is going to be civic, but we need the water plant to be civic or light industrial or whatever it needs to be, they have the same parcel number. So if they have the same parcel number, how can they be zoned multiple different things?
So the, the resolution that was removed and that will potentially be brought back at the next commission meeting, depending on being done, being done, being written, it actually subdivided that into two different properties. So yes, right now it's one property. The one that was at the last commission meeting, not only rezoned, it broke it up into two properties.
Okay.
And so the next one would presumably do the same thing. Does that, does that answer your question?
Not necessarily because I'm a little confused on how you can have different zoning codes with the same parcel number?
It would be breaking it into a new parcel.
But we are voting already, so it was brought to the planning board with the parcel number for the five acres. And then it's being brought back to the planning board on the 11th for the water plant part, not the five acres, but it's the same parcel number listed on both.
We're going to have to ask that question, Mr. Henry. I understand your confusion.
Okay.
If I were in your situation, I'd be asking that same question and I'd be backing it.
If I was in your situation, I'd go just in case.
Well, we plan to be at every meeting from here on out because you never know what's going to happen. Well, yeah, we will be at that also. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I have a last request from Ms. Lang.
Thank you so much. I thought maybe you forgot about me.
Got you.
Great. I really appreciate that. Name is Alicia Lang. I live at 9300 State Route 66. So today, I guess my comment won't be heard from the city officials. Not surprising. But I have a little announcement. So the, there's been a group of citizens who over the past roughly year and a half have been very passionate about getting to the bottom of what has happened with the battery burning situation out here. It's been, you know, I think you're very aware of how upset quite, quite a large number of citizens and the community has been about that. So I understand that you have the committee appointed by you all coming up with a report. Funny thing I have in my hand here, also a report. This report contains some things that have been discovered by the public through records requests, FOIA requests, interviews and the like. And this report will be made public tomorrow. You can find it at safepickwa.com at 3:00 PM. 76 pages. We even have cute little pictures in it. I think that a lot of questions will be answered. We also have quite a few questions in here. Quite a few documents have been referenced. And I feel that it was put together very well. And, you know, everything's backed up with public documents. So nothing can really be refuted. So I urge you all to take a look. You know, something deep inside makes me feel like maybe you already have a copy. But I feel that the community and quite a few people may be interested in this. So once again, the citizens of this town have contributed to a report also on the battery burning. And this report, once again, will be available on safepickwa.com tomorrow, March 5th, 2025, at 3:00 PM. We thought it was very fitting because tomorrow is Ash Wednesday. And there's like a little children's rhyme and it goes ashes, ashes, we all follow that. So it was good timing.
I saw it was Ash Wednesday.
Oh, it's not. Well, ashes, you know. So I'll get a little cross tomorrow and then push the live button. So I hope you all find this very enlightening. So also, I'm not sure that this actually contains everything. So another report is on the way. But this is a great start. And we're very eager for the public to finally get some questions answered.
Hey, Alicia, how many pages is in that?
There's 76 pages in this report.
Are you okay if I like print that out? I don't spend that much time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Go ahead and print it out. I would give you a printed copy. See, it costs me $15.
Oh, no.
Dollars per copy.
Yeah.
And I, you know, yeah, please, please do take highlight, take notes if there's anything that is, you know, unclear. Totally happy to provide clarity if I'm able, you know? So that's really what I came to say today was that the people are here working for the people. So hallelujah for that. I'm going to go ahead and finish Nick's sentiments here because his time was cut off. So we say the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of the meetings and proclaim one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you apply these words to our community locally, we are divided as the Pequen Indian Nation. Our faith is being tempted through the promise of a dollar that may or may not be. Our liberties may be, have been suppressed due to our words no longer being fully and properly recorded and dictated on paper as the sentiments we speak, but rather only that we spoke and our justice is being compromised to the point where we are not allowing for a fully informed citizenry which lends itself towards affecting votes and outcomes of elections. Oh. Oh, by the way, I have a question for you. Are you planning to run for reelection?
Find out.
Yes or no?
Find out with everyone else?
I'm assuming that's a yes. So I'm gonna add a public comment of mine. We need people to run. So if anyone's watching, listening...
I'll second that.
We need people to run. One more thing. I find it highly disrespectful to our first responders to be provided with and to have to trade on property that had to be tested for contamination. According to the report, soil report released by the city, contamination was found to be present, and it still exists. It is highly disrespectful to continue to burn anything out there, especially to the Hampshire Cabinet Company. After all the turmoil they endured for seven years, a huge slap in the community's face, and to double down...
Your time is about to run out, you just...
Thank you. No, I think that's it. So savepickwa.com tomorrow, March five, twenty twenty-five, three P M. Hour of our Lord. So what was that?
Three P M. Eastern Time?
Eastern Standard Time. Some people call it New York Time also, so...
God's time.
God's time. It's God's time.
Unless you live in San Francisco.
Unless you live in San Francisco. That's right. And I love chickens, and I probably have more chickens than I can count, and I don't smell anything. So, love you guys.
Thank you. That concludes all the papers that I have for people wanting to make comments. Is anybody else interested in making comments that didn't have an opportunity to fill out a form?
Seeing none, I would motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming.